... may be joining from home on watching us on TV. Call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, May 25th? 23rd. Let the time get away from me. But, so call that meeting to order. If we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation, the blaze of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many blessings we received in the city of Pecosin over the last two weeks. We continue to ask for your guidance as we deliberate issues before us this evening, help us to understand the concerns of our citizens, and help us to make the best decisions on their behalf. Please look over our military, especially those serving in foreign lands, as they protect us here, safe at home in the United States of America. And watch out for their families. Also, a special prayer this evening for our public safety officials and servants, as they do their duty to protect all of us in our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do things a little differently this evening, because we do have a large crowd here, and trying to let people speak about what they want to speak about without being delayed here for a series of public hearings this evening. We know that to do that, we need to first make a change to the agenda, and can I have a motion to modify that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify our agenda, in that we move item number two under new business, resolution approving traffic improvements on Terrace and Bunning Lane, to item C1, just under audience for visitors.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we modify the agenda. Any questions or comments, concerns? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And now, we will open that audience for visitors, and I will basically ask that we do have three public hearings tonight, so to avoid any confusion, if you're here to speak about -- we have three public hearings as well. If you're here to speak about the pause issue on expanding that facility on Messick Road, please wait for that public hearing, don't talk now. The request for Amiens Baptist Church to modify its existing conditional use permit to expand on that property, wait for that public hearing, don't speak at the audience for visitors. And the third, actually, third and fourth would be a request of Davis &amp; Associates for variances on the city subdivision ordinance. That will be the third public hearing, so you'll have a separate opportunity to speak about each one of those. And then, fourth would be the sale of city-owned property at 826 Pecosin Avenue. And probably not too many people here to speak about that, but that is a separate public hearing. So, if you're here to speak about something else on the agenda, be it Bunning's Lane, Terrace Drive, it is, or you have another concern in the city that you'd like to bring to our attention, I'm gonna open the audience for visitors, and now is the time for you to speak. Now, I do have a list of people that have signed up, and I'm gonna read them, but if I miss you, please raise your hand, we want to hear from you. Okay? All right, so I'm gonna call, because my understanding is Kristy Stone wants to speak on Bunning's Lane? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I'm here, my name is Chrissy Forston, and I live at 42 Bunning Lane, and I'll soon be 70 years old, and I was born and raised on Bunning Lane. And needless to say, you can tell how much I love it. And over all these years, I have seen many, many changes that has come. And right now, it's one of the most heartwarming times I have ever seen in my life, because with the addition of Channel Walk and down Locust Run, we have a whole Bunning Lane and all that, and that roundhouse is full of children, and it's so wonderful to see that. But along with that, I've come, because I'm so much in favor of the three-way stop sign. With these children, and that lane also, we've also acquired lots of speeders. And it so happens that our house, our den is on the front of the house, and we sit there real often, and we even try to figure how fast they're going when my children even there, because by the time I'm midway at Bunning Lane, by the time they hit my lane, they're really going. But I come mainly because I don't like to go by hearsay, or what I've heard, only what I experienced and I know. And I have, just last summer, for instance, I have a little, I like my yard, and I'm outside a lot, and I like to do the flowers and things, and I have a little farmer's or a little gardener's stool that I'm on that has wheels. And I was about five to six or more feet away from the road, doing, we'd my little, the place that I have there, and I was back, coming from Pecosin Avenue, down Bunning Lane. And I'm sitting there, and the first thing I heard, you just wouldn't have believed the sound of somebody speeding, and they were going really fast. And I kind of froze, and I thought, oh, my gosh, I'm going to get hit. And by the time they got me, got to where I was, they were going so fast that the wind, from how fast they were going, literally blew me off of my little seat that I was on. And also, sometime during that time, or later during the summer, the Corfords live across the road from me at 45 Bunning Lane, and only by the grace of God, was this little boy on a skateboard right in front of their driveway. And I was out in my yard, and this car was coming, and that little fellow, that little boy, he's about 11 years old, he, quick as he could, if it hadn't been for that, he went right into their driveway. And had it not been for their driveway, he wouldn't have just been hit, he would have been airborne. And I mean, he was, I just, when I think about it now, it makes me think, because I went over, because he was so shaken up, that I put my arm around him, and he was so shaken up, and he says, "I almost got hit." He says, "I almost got hit," and I said, "Yes, you did." I said, "But you're okay, are you okay?" And he said he was. But those, I don't go by hearsay, I go just by what I know. A friend of us that lived in back of us, he made all, many of the neighbors, cost 'em forest, made us these little birdhouses and paper boxes or whatever. And also, last summer, it was last in fall, we had one sitting there, and when I, we were getting ready to go to bed, and we heard the greatest noise we had ever heard. And when we went out, after we got there, the car was, vehicle was gone. It was about 9:30, 10 o'clock at nighttime, and the other things happened during the daytime. But that spoke of, but when we went there, we went out, and we found our completely uprooted, the stand and all, over in our neighbor's driveway. They had hit it, picked it up somehow or the other, and because they hit the ditch on my neighbors, and that dislodged it, and it was there. And we see all the time, I mean, we sit there, and like, for instance, in one minute's time this afternoon, I was just out there looking, three cars went by, and all three of them were going way over 35 miles an hour, at least 35 or more. And then Tracy, a neighbor of Crawford, she, her little dog Dom, a little black poodle, was killed last year, hit. We had not long ago, the other week, a cat, an animal was killed. And my problem is, is I am, and I called the police, and I've had them complain, and I called them when they hit the box. And we are now standing at the point of not if, it's gonna be when, a child or somebody is gonna be killed, it's that bad. And I just wanted to speak, because if I didn't come speak tonight, and when something like that does happen, I want to be able to say, well, I did go speak, and I did the best I could. And I thank y'all so much for listening tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, I got some guy on here named Mr. Bobby.
Can somebody else go ahead, please?
Okay. All right, Debbie Bunny?
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Ms. Wiggins, Mr. Moore. I am gonna speak tonight regarding the proposal for stop signs to be placed on Bunting and Floyd. In my opinion, erecting stop signs in this area is not a calming technique in that area. It's not even the midway point for Bunting. And there is a driveway that's gonna be right in this intersection, and that driveway happens to belong to my daughter. This causes much concern for me. I back out of that driveway every day, as she has a newborn baby, and I don't miss a day going to see him. I back out of that driveway, and when I back out of that driveway now, I know if I see cars coming, they're gonna be going by. I'm not gonna have to worry about, are they gonna stop? Is it too close for me to try to make it? And what are they gonna do? Are they not gonna stop? Are they gonna speed up? What are they gonna do? You just don't know what another driver's gonna do. So this, her driveway, being in this intersection, to me, is enough that this proposal should not even have been considered. If this is a proposal to be considered, perhaps there's another location on Bunting that could be considered, instead of involving her driveway. She has an infant baby that is in the backseat of that car, and I hate the thought of her backing out of her driveway with that baby, the first one to be stuck out in that road, going in the middle of an intersection, a three-way intersection. I'm sure you have thought about other calming measures. I was just aware of this issue a week ago. I'm not sure when the letters went out, perhaps last week. I think maybe there needs to be more time to look into other calming measures that may work. I understand that calming measures, other ones are expensive. This would be the least expensive solution, if you call it a solution, which I don't, would be to this issue. I think there needs to be other avenues looked at, to see if there is another solution to this. Presence of law enforcement. I know a continued presence of law enforcement, and when people are ticketed for speeding, they're gonna think twice when they speed again on that road. I was ticketed on Odd Road a couple of years ago, and I think twice. I'm looking at my speedometer every time now I'm on Odd Road, thinking, oh, I gotta remember, this is only 25. Perhaps the speed limit even needs to be lowered if 25 isn't enough. I don't know what the solution is. I just know the current solution that's being proposed tonight, because there is a driveway right smack in the middle of this intersection, is not a good proposal. This proposal causes another dangerous situation for my family, anyone who would come to see her or back out of her driveway. I would hate to see a solution to a problem be passed when it only creates another problem for others. I, also, my father lives on, my father has a house, he no longer lives on Terrace, but he has a house on Terrace Drive. I don't think the two can be compared, because it's very different. South Terrace and the location where the stop signs are gonna be placed on Bunting, I think there's no correlation between the two. I would be in favor for a stop sign to be placed on South Terrace for a long time. I think sometimes cars just increase their speed coming out of South Terrace, as they're coming toward the intersection of Terrace and Pecosin Avenue. So I don't think you can even, you know, say the two, not that anyone has, are alike or similar, because in my opinion, they're not. So, just wanna make sure I didn't miss any of my points here that I wanted to say. With all that, I would respectfully ask you to vote no for this proposal, if it comes to a vote, and that you would consider other measures, even though other measures may be more expensive. I would hope that you would put a family's and other families' safety ahead of that, and I think I know all of you well enough that you would. You wouldn't put any family in our city in danger by creating a dangerous situation just to solve another. And I do respect each of you, and I do deeply appreciate your service to our city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see, going down the list here. Jessica Adams?
Hi.
Hello.
This is my first council meeting. My name is Jessica Adams, and I reside at 16 Langley Street, which is off of church, which is off of Bunting. First, I'd like to thank each of you for serving our city. I know that you are not paid nearly enough for that. As a teacher, I understand that. I'd also like to thank you for taking the issue on Bunting Lane seriously and considering all of the options. I personally have two concerns over how the situation has unfolded. The first is the method of notification of citizens that this potential major traffic change, and my belief that would cause additional and unnecessary traffic congestion on Bunting Lane, has been kind of made aware. I understand from serving, lots of citizens on different streets that maybe perhaps some of Floyd, I didn't know anyone personally on Floyd, but multiple Bunting Lane residents were sent a letter. I feel that those letters really should have gone to a larger group, that this impacts many more than just those residents living on Bunting's Lane. I think that that is a thoroughfare for all of, not only Bunting, but Lodge, Church, and all of the streets, Langley, Rollins. I would like to think that in the future, maybe a better suggestion. I remember that the Pauls had a variance request not too long ago, and there was a sign stuck in their yard for at least seven days, saying that they wanted that variance request, and I feel something this major, that if sending letters isn't the right approach to more citizens, that perhaps a sign saying something as simple as proposed traffic change to make citizens aware. I walk up and down Bunting Lane at least three times a week, it's my ninety percent of the time. Sure with my mother. And the one thing that I would like you all to know is that although from time to time, there may be an occasional person who's speeding, and it's evident, I think that that's the exception and not the rule. Most people are very polite, they slow down, they wave. I know multiple people, I see lots of them here tonight, who are coming to speak to ask you not to approve the proposed stop sign. I think that one of the major concerns that I personally have is that not only is this speeding not as major of concern as being portrayed, that it also creates another problem. And that problem is, and I wrote it kind of catchy, but I won't be able to find that now, that if any of you were to choose to come down Bunting Lane on any trash Tuesday or recycling Friday, it's like an obstacle course. And to try and add stop signs to that obstacle course, in my opinion, only adds another obstacle. And you're gonna have people slowing down, and then speeding up to get around all of those trashcans and recycling bins, so you're actually creating an additional problem, not a solution. I'm concerned that a stop sign would create additional congestion, and I feel like there are other measures that the city could take in order to address a potential speeding problem. One question that I do have as a citizen is the, what I call, presence of speed awareness sign that's currently on Bunting Lane now, does that take any type of data? I don't know if you can answer either. Great. So, I think that putting that data out and making the citizens more aware would be a better course of action, but in my opinion, I feel like we could increase patrol, double speeding fines, I know you see that scene in other places, or increase the presence of the speed awareness sign. So those are some things that I would ask you to do. I would ask you, at least at a minimum at this time, to vote no to the stop signs that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jesse Wood?
Hello, Mayor Hunt, members of council, city staff.
Good evening, Jesse. How you doing?
My name is Jesse Wood, and I reside at 151 Church Street. I'm here tonight to speak about your proposal to change the traffic on Bunting Lane, like everybody else. Really, I'm here by accident. I didn't know nothing about this. My son called and said, "Hey Dad, what's this on the TV about Bunting Lane?" You know, so I started looking into it. I was dumbfounded as I learned more. I was even more taken aback after talking to neighbors and posting to social media, and finding that with the exception of a few residents right there at Bunting and Floyd, nobody else in the neighborhood knew about this. You, at the meeting, at your last meeting, Mayor Hunt, Dean, asked that those on Bunting and Floyd be notified. I don't think that was enough, I really don't. This request did not go far enough, as Bunting is the major way in and out of that entire neighborhood. You should have notified Floyd, Holly, Church, Channel Walk, Bradshaw, Lodge, Langley, Rollins, and maybe even throw in Martha and Locust Court, just so those people are aware. And none of those people know about this. A lot of the people might be seeing it for the first time tonight, and I feel like before this discussion even goes any further, those people deserve a fair chance to know this is being discussed. The only ones notified were right there in that immediate area, and this, I mean, Bunting turns into church. That is one road in the minds of a lot of people. But since you are discussing this tonight, I'm here in opposition. I feel that this type of change will cause more problems than solutions, and has not been well thought out. First, I ask, is there really a problem? Has any kind of study been done to record the speed of vehicles now used in the road, and if so, do we have results? I feel for the residents who feel this is an issue. I just don't agree with them, and I live on the same road they do. This is where I feel a study will give real results, if you have a study, and I saw Tracy hold up something a minute ago, and maybe you do have a study. I know in the past, they've done this, and it didn't bear fruit. But react to the study. I've talked to several police officers who have said they do occasionally write a ticket on Bunting, but no more there than anywhere else in the city. And why do I bring that up? Well, as everybody in this room knows, the same discussion in the past three, four, or five years has been held over Rens, Valmore, Brown's Neck, pasture, Hudgens, and right now in the biggie, Messick Road. If you do it on Bunting, are you gonna do it on the rest of those streets? Because do it for one, do it for all. You just can't solve an issue like this with a couple stop signs, I don't think. You know, earlier I asked, if studies have been performed, my question to you is, if in fact these studies have been done, what are the results? Let's address the results. Is speeding an issue? My proposal, and I'm not saying it's the answer, but if a study is done, and it bears fruit that speeding is an issue, why can't we approach it the way other jurisdictions have? Double the fines, you know, make this a, whatever they call it, a high-risk area or whatever, you know, go through Kiln Creek and get a ticket, you're gonna pay a lot more than anywhere else in Newport News. I just feel like that may be an answer, it may not be an answer, but I feel like the stop sign is not the answer. I really don't. I want to thank you for your time tonight, allowing me, and I want to thank every one of you for what you do for the city. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, it's like Dr. James Tinsley.
Most of you, I guess some of you up there know, this is my second time up there about this. I was here in like 2008, 2009. I digested the city data that you guys had from 2008, 2009, right here. If anybody out there wants to see, I got some copies here. We did do a study, by the way, in case you're wondering. I know you probably didn't hear about it, sir, but.
The track the speeding is pretty significant in our city, don't you think?
Hold on, hold on, say it. Hold on, hold on.
Just address council.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Do y'all want, do y'all want a copy?
No, no, we've got copies of traffic studies, even recent ones, okay?
So, speeding is pretty significant, and I'll just hit highlights of what I got in here. Okay, so I broke it down into a couple speeding sections, 11 to 19 miles per hour, 20 to 25, 26 to 30, 31, 35. 36 to 40, 41 above. 41 above I didn't even touch, because it could spur your state appointments, whatnot. Just let me introduce myself real quick to you guys. I'm a family doctor. Started off as a civil engineer from VMI, graduated with distinction, went on to Duke University, got my master's, published thesis, teaching assistantship, did a little bit of army time, worked as an engineer, and then went to medical school. So, I'm not a stranger to digesting data and publishing data. I'm not a practicing engineer, so I don't have the prowess of your city engineer, but I do know a little bit. So, I did my own study on the data. Weekday, 26 to 30 miles an hour, 624 cars a day, 31, 35, 295 cars a day. Weekend data, that traffic actually picks up a little bit, and as they eloquently put, I mean, a lot of people use our street as a cut-through, so it's not just the people in our neighborhood. 26, 30 miles an hour, 922 cars a day, 31, 35, 498 cars a day, 36 to 40, 100 cars a day. So, we have a pretty big problem. 66.7% increase in traffic on Saturday. And I'm glad y'all are readdressing the issue, I really do appreciate it, because we're scared to death of having our kids in the front yard. Seen numerous cats get hit, but they're wild cats, they really weren't owned by anybody. Y'all are well aware of the cat problem, everybody's here. Seen a couple near misses from kids, thankfully, none of them been hurt. Tracy's dog, we know, was killed not too long after I presented this data first time. So, as far as a stop sign, that's, you know, I think they've got a good point. That's not the best solution. Best solution, I think, is speed bumps, which are a little bit more costly, and increase the fines on the traffic speed limits. But barring that, if we can't have that, I mean, stop sign is the least favorable solution, but it's one that I'm going to settle for if we can't get anything else. But something definitely needs to be done, folks, I really do think that, I really do thank that for another, for a kid gets hurt, rather than just animals.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pam Andrew Lunes?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Andrew Lunes, Ms. Pam from the school system, 23 years retired, and my husband and I both now are looking forward to have our little retirement on our corner of Bunting and Floyd. And our, and good evening to all of you, and thank you for everything that you do for us. I want to thank Dr. Tinsley, because I just was reminded then, that back when this study was done, that my name is there, and it says enforce the speed limit, more pronounced limit signs, monitor during peak hours, public awareness, everything that, you know, we're asking again tonight. We received a letter, not hearing anything prior to the letter, last weekend, and it said, and I had to keep reading it, "The proposed traffic calming solution." And I really could not, calming solution of traffic. Then, as I'm looking at it, I realize, stop speeders from breaking the law. Why can't anyone say that? That's what this is about, stopping speeders from breaking the law. The other politically correct words, if you just look at that, doesn't even address it. Speeders come down Bunting Lane, but the way they come down Bunting Lane is, if you turn into Bunting Lane, you don't even have to hit Locust without heavy acceleration, and you're at 20. That's just, you know, a normal car, 20, 25. You put a three-way stop, they're gonna have plenty of time to go down speeding. If they're, if they're gonna speed, they're gonna speed. That's just their nature of driving. They're gonna have plenty of time, and then they're gonna stop. Then, look at from that intersection all the way down to Lodge and Church. Whole lot to put it, pedal, and take off again. So what are you doing? Stop signs, to my knowledge, are for a reason of to keep the traffic flowing. If a side street has to come out and they need to go out to a main road, that's what stop signs are for. I've never seen a stop sign used to stop speeders. And this is what this whole is about. We have a flow of traffic, and the flow of traffic, our roads are so narrow that two cars go side by side. And if you, all us walkers, we have been there for thirty-four years. We've raised three sons right there on the corner. And use that road when you're walking, bike riding, whatever, car comes on your side, they have to slow up and go around. But they can't, if there's another car coming, they have to slow up, stop, and then the car go around. You come to this intersection, I'm busy, which we don't, I don't know if there's been a survey, but that intersection during mornings, early, late afternoons, Saturdays, there's going to be a backup. There's no, there's, you, there's no way you're not going to have a backup with the amount of cars, and you're going to be stopping the flow. Well, when you stop that, all those people that are out walking and using the roads, they're not going to be able to be on the road. They're going to be forced to go out onto the yards. Bicycle clubs, I was contacted by one of the women that's head of one of them, she said she was shocked because they use our area because it's one of the nicest flowing, and it is a courtesy that is used. We have speeders, there's no question, but the rest of the city does. Our sons came to our defense because they were just like, "Our driveway? Well, Lindsay's goes right in the middle, but ours is going to go right to, I think, where the white line's going to be. I don't even know. I don't know how we're going to back out and, and probably have to wait, and the stop sign's going to be right there." It, it makes no sense. But when I asked, and we thank Ms. Vicki Diggs for all the information, she's been busy giving my husband, uh, the information we asked, at your proposal, the cost estimate, which was the least expensive, we always go least expensive. Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but not if it's not the right one. And it lists, putting three stop signs, goes down everything, but then there's a little asterisk at the bottom. And this is what ends it all for me, how you could even consider it. The right-hand turn radius from Floyd Avenue onto Bunting Lane, which would be in front of our driveway, will be very tight, especially if there is a stopped vehicle in the northbound lane on Bunting Lane. Right there, if that's stated, it's already telling you that there's a dangerous problem. So my last question would be, my last thing would be, signs, new ones, twenty-five mile an hour, why not, you get a ticket, because you got to get a ticket, but there's no, never been any talk about fines. That, and we have, we, we sent you pictures of them, the communities that have them, and you sniff, that, the one we had a picture of, $200 fine. Tell me, the word gets out, and you have a $200 fine on a ticket, and you know what? Not just Bunting Lane, because throughout the community, there's everyone's got the speeding issue. But don't go after us. Please, use common sense and go after the speeders, and use our police, who are wonderful, and if they need more help in doing it, then so be it. We sent you a couple other ideas. I won't take any more time. Appreciate it all, but please, please, think seriously on this, and no stop signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terri Gooding?
Council members, good evening. Uh, I have heard some really valid points out here, and I'm going to probably add and expand on a few of them. Terri Gooding, seventy-seven Bunting Lane, lived there for forty years. And I know that coming around off Church, many of the speeders are well over the speed limit before they get by my house, which is four houses up from Church Road. So I'm very familiar with the speeding problem. Additionally, I'd like to bring up that as summer approaches and we have kids on the roads at nighttime, that's what has a big concern for me with the amount of speeding that goes on. So they, they ride their bikes on the wrong side of the road, they're, they're dressed in dark clothes, and it's just an accident waiting to happen, especially with some of the speeding concerns. Lodge Road, I walk on Lodge Road as well as, you know, the young lady that talked about, and Lodge Road can be worse than Bunting Lane because it's a long, straight stretch, and walking down there, I've been very concerned about the speeders that, that go along that road. I do, do not think that a stop sign on Bunting Lane is necessarily going to solve the problem. I think if you would consider it, just food for thought, and I know somebody else mentioned some alternatives, is I know in Newport News, several of the neighborhoods have not speed bumps, but they're called speed humps. And so they are just a gradual rise, but they're just enough so that if you go five miles over the speed limit, you're going to bottom out on it. Now, I know that that's going to be more of a costly venture, but I think, you know, if we're going to address this issue on some of our roads, that we may want to do that. Of course, a lot of cities now are making the roundabouts, and our city really is not, you know, built for that, but I think the speed humps might be an alternative to the stop sign, and you could set maybe two of them up, you know, one closer down to my end, and then one closer to the upper end that would slow people down, not hurt the bicyclists, not cause a traffic jam, but still maintain the safety, you know, of Bunting Lane. I would like to see possibly some police presence increase because you do have up at one end that they can sit at that little, uh, parking area, and then down right across the street from me, where Sammy Storey used to be, is a great place. And I do see them, but I do think that we could possibly increase it, and as people have mentioned, increasing the fines, uh, a more of a presence with the police, and we can stop it, you know, stop it from there. And so I hope that you will possibly take that food for thought and make that a consideration in solving all the problems that people have, uh, brought, brought up. So thank you for your service, thank you for your attention, and I'm sure we'll come to some agreement on this.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Darrell Freeman? You're here to talk about terrorist drive?
My name is Darrell Freeman, I have fourteen, Terrace Drive. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Really wasn't expecting to speak, so I'll make this short and sweet. This is a known problem. I believe everybody on Bunting even knows about terrorist drive issues. So I thank you for your, uh, attention to this problem. I appreciate your, um, expedience on trying to get this settled, and I will speak for, I won't speak for anybody on the street except for myself, but I have several signatures on people on the street who are in total agreeance with the proposal that y'all have come up with, so, uh, vote yes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, how about now, Mr. Bobby? Would you like to speak?
My name is Alex Wheeler. Must have either be due. I've been in this city fifty-some years. I've raised four girls on Bunting Lane, raised Henry on Bunting Lane. I haven't let my children get in the street without escort. In the mornings, I have a little girl this day, goes to the elementary school before eight o'clock. On the rainy days, she's got the umbrella, well, get back. I've worked for the school system, coached for twelve years, but after two heart attacks, two strokes, my children said, "Daddy, retire." And I'm sitting there having heart attacks, looking out my window. Your prayer, protect their families. That's the only thing I worry about in the city. You grownups, don't bother me. You should have some good sense. But if we put them little humps there, you know what that is? Evil cannibals. The motorcycles now is on our street. Anybody got motorcycles come through? I mean, I could sleep in my front bedroom. I don't, I have to get back in the back, throw you in the back, because you can hear them whining up. Last week, I'm talking to my mailman, I get to walk to the street for my exercise. I say, "Have a safe trip." He said, "Thank you." I almost got run over today. It was on Bunting Lane. We have no sidewalks, my front yard has got a track in it where the children step off the road because it's a big ditch. And the cars, I don't know where he got his, I know he looked at that sign.
Yes, sir.
Coming my way, you can't see the sign. So we got to guess that they're going to stop before they get to the end of the road. My main concern is these people's children. I can put my blinds closed and watch TV all I want to, and I'd be worried. Used to have one policeman set my side driveway, and I said, "I don't care what the grownups say to me, as long as a child don't get hurt." I campaigned for it in front of the middle school, telling the police officer, "We need a guard there." Before I got home, a little boy got hit because some lady did this to him. No flashing lights, no nothing. On my street the same way, with the walkers, nothing against Pam. My daughter walks that street, early in the morning, but they carry a lantern. But you have to walk this way unless you're talking. They do present a terrible, terrible chance of an accident happening. Talked to your boys about it before, to be careful coming out of your driveway if you're on a skateboard. I have no qualms about a stoplight, stop sign, or whatever. A little bit of presence, just to slow them down. I do stick my hand up. I can take all the criticism and the cussing they want. It don't bother me. But you need to do something for one of y'all's children, and y'all's children get hurt.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Mine is all left-hand, except mine.
All right. Now, I tried to do as best I could going through this list. Did I miss anybody that want to speak on this issue? All right. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deanna Andrews. I live at Seven Martha Court. I'm actually not here to speak about the stop signs, but I'll throw in my two cents since I live on Martha. I wouldn't have to go through them to leave my house, so, um, it wouldn't cause a traffic jam for me. But I am a runner who runs down Bunting and Church, and I don't know what the solution is. I think people here had good points, but I sure would like to see the traffic slow down as a runner on that road. So, um, that's all I had to say about that. But what I actually wanted to talk about is just to make a request. This, the Planning Commission had a public hearing last week on something that's going to be heard tonight by city council, and, um, somebody had, I attended the Planning Commission, so I got to see it, and I tried to record it for my husband, but I recorded the wrong time, so we didn't, you know, didn't have it to record. Um, and somebody else had contacted me and said, um, "Do you know where I can watch the Planning Commission meeting?" So I went to the website to see if it was archived, and it wasn't archived. So, um, you know, I emailed Vicki and Judy and said, "Hey, um, you know, where is it?" And, and they said it wasn't up there yet. It's going to be put up, which is, you know, great. But what I, my request would be, if you have, if we have something where the Planning Commission is, has a public hearing where people might be interested in speaking, and the very next week you guys are going to hear that same issue, I think it would be really great if that Planning Commission meeting could be on the website prior to you guys hearing it, so that people that might be interested in it, that weren't able to attend or watch it, or maybe don't have a DVR to record it, um, would be able to go to the website and view the Planning Commission meeting when it's something, you know, on a regular basis, it's probably not an issue, but when you have a public hearing back-to-back that they might be interested in it, it would just be nice to have it on the, on the website.
All right, thanks. Diane, did I see your handle back there? Do you like to speak?
I was on your list, you just missed me. I'm Diane Holloway. I'm here, um, I live at seventy-three Lodge Road, and I'm here tonight to speak on the stop signs on Bunting's Lane. I'm going to kind of deviate. I emailed everyone, so pretty much know where I stand. I'm going to deviate a little bit because most of the stuff's been covered. Pam Andrew-Lunis, I applaud her. She hit most of the points that I would like to make. I had to dodge trashcans twice this afternoon, one directly, I think it was actually in front of your house, that was in the middle of the road. And so you're talking twice every other week, twice a week, on Tuesdays and Fridays, that it's just a madhouse. And like Debbie Bunting said, her daughter's trashcan will be right in the intersection. Go through driveway, is there. There's speeders everywhere. Our road on Lodge Road, it is like a racetrack some days. Two weeks ago, a car sitting on the side of the road got totally creamed during the middle of the night. From the front headlight all the way up to the driver's door, the fender was peeled up. Somebody flying through there, and the cars, you have to weave in and out of those. So we have, we have speeders also. I don't think putting additional stop signs at that point is going to cure that, because some of the ones that I know speed are younger teenagers, and as soon as that, they go past that stop sign, they are going to gun that to the next turn or corner that they get to. I definitely think stiffer fines is definitely a good idea. Another thing to consider is that road is used, um, as a route for evacuation from the lower end when you have tidal flooding, to get there and to go home. And if you have a Hurricane Isabel-type situation, or we've had others since then, oh-nine, eleven, that affected me, um, we can hardly get out of our driveway as it is because of the traffic going through there. And you consider people with their campers and their boats and their, you know, their whatever, um, like us, four or five cars that were moving up to higher ground. If you have to stop at that stop sign going in and out, you have potential to back up on Pocahontas Avenue when you're turning into Bunting. I mean, because that stop sign would not be too far up the road, and you figure the amount of traffic, it takes us sometimes ten minutes to get out of Lodge Road onto Bunting in a situation like that as it is. So I don't necessarily think that that's going to alleviate the problems totally. You know, there are a lot of good ideas. I would not be forced to be bumps. I've seen what people do to those, too. You know, it's like you said, they're recreational vehicles, you know, kids on their bikes doing pop-overs, and along that area, to be perfectly honest, um, kids are in the street all the time. And, you know, I would look to the parents and say, "You've got, most, most of the houses there have deep yards. Keep your kids in the backyards." You know, when I grew up, we were taught to stay out of the street. We were taught the correct way to walk down the street. When I walk, you know, I walk facing the traffic, so I know if somebody's coming down there speeding, I get off to the side and I stay, I stand. So I think there's a lot of things that can be done, and I would just encourage you to, you know, think about some other solutions before you, you make a, a decision tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else that I missed? Okay. Now, I'll close the audience for visitors. We changed the agenda, so Randy, have you had a staff presentation on this item?
Sure. Let's, let's at least talk about it, and then I'm sure council would like to discuss it. Sorry, let's, let me flip through it real quick. The, um, what you'll see will do, it's difficult for me to see. I might want to cut the lights back, so I'm going... All right. It's Bunting Lane, you've heard a great deal about it this evening. The underlying concern, uh, that was discussed with the council at the last meeting, is concerns of residents regarding speeding on the road. The proposal, um, which we, at your direction, uh, shared via letter with the residents of Bunting Lane, was to erect, there's a, there's already a stop sign, um, at Floyd's, so essentially to add two more to make an hallway stop. I would agree with the comments of some people that this in and of itself isn't going to correct any problem by itself. But the issue is what is the right thing? I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback from folks this evening on what it is. The item before you this evening is whether or not you would like to move forward with, the proposal, um, as put forward, or rather take some different, different tact with, with getting at the underlying problem.
Okay, how about the terrorist drive?
Could you put up the other, Kevin? Thank you. The, um, folks are, if you live anywhere close... The folks are, if you live anywhere close to Terrace Drive, you're familiar with this issue, which is exacerbated in terms of traffic volume and sometimes traffic behavior by the cut-through traffic to and from the high school as well. If you look to the left, just to orient those that may not be familiar, the high school is in pretty close proximity. So, maybe I got that backwards. Look to the left, excuse me, excuse me, to the right, the bottom right. At present, starting from the bottom right, there is a stop sign there now, and we have recently painted that white stop bar that you see. The proposal is to, to paint that double-yellow line all the way from that stop sign to, to new stop signs, which would be a replacement to the current yield, yield sign-controlled intersection. If you stand in the road, and know that it's there, and really squint, you can see that there used to be some amount of yellow lines to the left where the new stop signs are proposed. But we're proposing to go ahead and paint them from essentially point A to point B. There are many issues, and the residents can speak to it better than I can, but the first issue that we became aware of as we worked through this issue at Mr. Green's request, is that coming, if the top of the screen is north, coming north to south to that, to the first proposed new stop sign intersection, because of the yield sign, because of the relatively odd placement of that island, and the fact that there are no street markings painted, there is tendency for folks to actually shortcut that island and actually come on its left side into the ongoing traffic lane, in addition to speeding throughout. We think this will help keep folks on the correct side of the road in a manner that's safe, and will assist with the secondary, but real issue of speeding as well.
Okay. All right, so let me see, the item that we have on the agenda this evening is, is basically a resolution approving traffic improvements on Terrace Drive, South Terrace Drive, and Bunty Lane. Is that all in one?
No, so there, there, there are two resolutions.
Okay. So, does anybody have a motion on the one on? Let's take Terrace Drive first.
Mayor, we adopt a resolution approving traffic improvements to Terrace Drive and South Terrace Drive.
Second.
A motion made in second that we adopt the resolution and do some lane marking only on Terrace Drive to improve the traffic flow through there.
And the stop signs.
Okay. All right, questions, comments by council? Seeing on Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Hi.
Councilman Vernal.
Hi.
Councilman Green.
Hi.
Councilman Ayer.
Hi.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Hi.
Mayor Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to either move forward on Bunty Drive, or to postpone Bunty Drive, or to not recommend Bunty Drive? A motion on Bunty Drive, Bunty Lane.
Mr. Mayor, I move that, given the opposition by a lot of residents, the fact that there are probably a lot that still were not aware of this solution, that we table this item, and that in the time that it's brought back up, that we increase police presence, and that we look at the possibility of more speed limit signs along that road, and we consider maybe making that a zone where the speeding fine is increased.
Agreed, as well as doing a...
About a second.
A second. As well as doing a traffic study, I think, you know, put up the box, is all I'm asking. I'll do the math for you.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second that we basically postpone action on this.
No, I believe the motion was to table. My question was, do you want to postpone it rather than table it?
I think we do.
As postponing would allow you to bring it back up without having a formal vote to take it off the table.
Yes.
I thought it was the opposite way, I thought if you tabled it, you had to move to bring it back.
If you table, you do have to move to bring it back. If you postpone it, it can be brought back up whenever you direct the manager to put it back on the agenda.
Okay, I'll, I'll change that to postpone.
Second.
Can we put a time limit on it? We postpone it until sometime, rather than just leave it open-ended?
I would, you know, we have this recent study that shows that less than 5% of the people speed along that stretch.
No, no, no. No.
Alda, 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 this is council's, this is council's discussion.
I'm not here to debate, I'm just telling you what this says.
No, that's not what this says. This has 30% of the people speeding, 31%, and if you, well, we'll talk about it later.
Why don't we simply say, one, we've heard a lot of good things this evening. First, I will tell everybody, hey, if you took offense to the fact that we didn't send letters to everybody, I will tell you that we heard that it was coming, I rushed right here, and I said, "We need to notify the neighbors before we do something in the neighborhood." And I apologize to you if I did not get your street, I'm not an expert down there, but we wanted to make sure that everybody knew what we were doing, okay? That's basically transparency in government. Second thing is, we know your road, it's a narrow road, it was built decades ago, okay? And we know that traffic flow has increased through there. One thing that I've heard is consistent, whether you spoke for it, you spoke against it, everybody said you have a problem. And what I would be interested in is, the traffic data that we're probably gonna ask Chief Bowen to run on your street, with this increased knowledge of what's going on and the concerns of the citizens, in the next week, will I see a difference? Okay? Will I see a difference in the way that the, that the people go through there? We will increase the signage, that's, that's not a major deal. We can do speed bumps, I don't like them either, I think there's no perfect solution. The perfect solution is, there's no perfect solution from a legislative body to tell you how to obey the law, okay? So there's no perfect solution. I can increase police presence, we can put in all sorts of traffic barriers, but there's no perfect solution to making sure it's yourself. I think the one thing I did here, I'd love to see the, the area considered for an increased speeding violation fine.
Can we do the entire city like that?
No, actually, you cannot.
It's, but we can do it road by road. But, but the bottom line is, you know, what I've heard here is, and I looked at the data too, and, you know, the data shows most people are traveling 20 to 29, is that right?
Well, that's...
That's, I'm, I'm just going by the, the most recent, you know, but, but, but the point is valid. By this lady here, by the doctor, that basically, they've got some people going 40, 42.
And that's when the thing is shining at your face.
And that's, and that's, you know, that's just discouraging. So, bottom line is, it is a thin road, and what I would say is, we'll take a week here, I think this is an excellent idea, a week or two. Actually, we will meet again in a month.
Before we, before we say week, two weeks, could we just, chief, could you just tell, how long do you think your presence and the, and the sign out there would give us reasonable data? And also, can you make that sign record speeds without telling the person how fast they're going?
Yeah, we have...
That sign, no.
We have a different one.
We can, we can check and see if our, if our stealth device is working, but I think it needs to be done, and a stealth device, either from a traffic engineering firm who can evaluate their data, where people won't know it's being tracked, would be the most effective way to get the data. This particular sign that we have out there now, though, there is a slight curve in the road, if you, if you go down there and drive it from Church Street, you don't see it until you're up to speed, but people are aware it's there, and so I'm sure it has some impact. But I would recommend that we do a stealth, using some kind of stealth technology, do a, do a traffic study over several weeks, and, and so I think two weeks is too tight a turnaround, I think we need to extend it out longer than that.
And we've got a month.
Yeah, I would say at least a month.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with...
We can get the extra presence out there immediately, but...
I agree with the chief, if we can do it by stealth method, and they don't know they're being clocked, I think you're gonna get a wide agree.
I agree with you, sir.
And the trailer needs to have stealth on the back of it.
All right. So, now, council, all right, so we've got a motion made in second, but Randy, I think what I'm hearing, the director of council, can we just evaluate the signage out there and go ahead and do that?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll be back in a month, or two months, because we don't want to rush this. We'll do, we'll do everything you suggested.
No, 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 I'm talking about, can we check the signage that's on the street right now?
Oh, sure.
And make sure it's pretty, white, and...
Absolutely.
And see if we can make a difference by obeying the law, instead of us legislating the law.
Absolutely.
All right.
I have one question, and you may not know this off the top of your head, how much are those, this either stealth device, or the, and, or the one that's there right now, the trailer?
Well, we've had, the stealth device that we have is bought in 2008, it's currently not operating, and it was probably six or $7,000.
Okay.
The one, the trailer out there was over $10.
Not cheap.
We got, I think we got that with a grand. All right, so we have a motion made in second. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, chief, I appreciate it.
I'd still like to suggest that we put some kind of, I don't particularly care if it's months or weeks, or House Express, but as soon as possible, kind of thing on this, if not a time limit.
I think the intention of council is to hear it next meeting.
A month.
I think two months might give us better data, but next month will be fine.
We can always say, "We're going to hear it next meeting, and if we don't have the data, we'll cancel the item."
Okay.
Okay?
Just for clarification, several people mentioned speed bumps. I know many years ago, I was living in Colonial Heights, and they wanted to put speed bumps, and they were not allowed to do it on a street in which state transportation money was being provided. Is that still the case? It was a big issue back then, so I...
I can take a shot at that, but we will look at everything I'm about to say again. We talked about this some years ago. Counties which operate under strictly VDOT standards are, are a little bit more hands strong than cities. We operate generally under VDOT guidelines, but not the same. As you go up in terms, if you lived in a county, I used to live in a county that had a similar kind of issue, the traffic calming, which is what that would be, traffic calming is a continuum, and speed bumps is fairly high up on the, on the list. I can't remember, but I think it's something around 70% of all of the people that would regularly use that, so in this particular instance, wouldn't just be the people on Bunty, it would be sort of all of the roads that feed into it regularly, would have to agree in riding. That is, the standard is not there in cities, but generally speaking, try to follow that as a guideline. You wanna make sure if you're gonna put something that is that significant up there, that you've got strong community support for it, or you'll have just as many people or more on the other end wanting to take it out.
Okay. Anything else, council? Now, Judy, please. Again, this is a motion to postpone until the next meeting.
Councilman Ayer.
Hi.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Hi.
Councilman Green.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Hi.
Councilman Vernal.
Hi.
And Mayor Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Now, if y'all want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we do have three exciting public hearings, okay? But if not, if you could quietly, if you could quietly get going, so we could get out of here.
And don't speed right back in.
Okay. Moving back to the normal agenda, we do have three, four public hearings this evening.
Approve of the...
And the first is a public hearing considering a request by the Pecosa Animal Welfare Sanctuary, or otherwise known as PAWS, to modify its existing conditional use permit for a pet sanctuary at 181 Messick Road by increasing the maximum number of cats on site from 50 to 100. Is there, is there a presentation for council?
Yes, sir.
The mayor?
You missed a minute.
Okay.
We need to...
Oh. How about a bye?
You can do it later.
I've already announced it's public here, so I'll come by the other minutes. Okay.
Mr. Wyman will make the presentation, I'm half-staffed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honourable members of council. Mr. Wheeler, in 2013, the Pecosa Animal Welfare Sanctuary came before you all to request a conditional use permit to operate a animal welfare sanctuary, in this case, a cat sanctuary, down at 181 Messick Road. Since then, the operation has grown as a service to the community, and their operations have expanded. With that, they're, they're coming to request that one of their conditions be amended, specifically Condition 8, that would allow them to keep 100 cats as opposed to the 50 that they are allowed to do now. The property is set back quite a ways from Messick Road. If you visit the, visited the site, you would notice that it's actually pretty well-screened from the residential dwellings that are in the vicinity. It's set back approximately 160 feet or so from Messick Road, and you drive down the driveway and get to their gate, and I'll show you some pictures from my most recent visit there shortly, but it is quite well-screened. The reason it necessitated the need for a conditional use permit is that it's zoned residential, it's zoned R2. This is not a use that's typically permitted within a residential district. As such, staffs came up with those eight conditions in their approved use permit that we believe would mitigate the impacts, the potential negative impacts from a, a use of this nature. It's important to note that it's operated for over two years now, closer to three, and has operated in compliance with its conditional use permit. In fact, we, we've not received any complaints from adjacent neighbors, and one of their conditions actually specified that they put in some fencing that would deter the cats from trying to hop the fence and, and get off the property, and that was installed, that was a milestone they met within the first year of having their conditional use permit. But these are just a few pictures I took, I took from outside of the facility, because it was locked at the time that I visited. But I, I think it's kind of interesting to note that in this picture, you don't see a single cat. I thought that was odd, but, but interesting nonetheless. You can see in this picture that kind of green material at the top of the fence that's inverted into the property, used to keep the, the cats out. Like I said, that was installed within the first year as a milestone of their conditional use permit. I use a closer angle of that. And this is their approach about halfway down the drive. So, the considerations that, and you have to consider this evening, just one of their conditions would have to be amended, and that would be to strike out 50 to allow for 100 cats. The Planning Commission considered this last Monday, and held a public hearing where no one spoke in opposition to the application, and they are recommending its approval to you all unanimously by a vote of six to zero, really citing the, the service that this organization provides for the city as, as one of their keys for their recommendation. With that being said, I can answer or address any concerns you may have regarding this amendment.
Any questions, council?
Couple of questions. Where all the, how many neighbors were notified about the, this change?
With public hearings, with land use applications of this nature, we usually put a radius of 300 feet around the, the subject property.
So how many is that?
In this case, Ms. Diggs.
I have to guess, probably about 20, 21.
And did you receive any comment from any of them?
No, I didn't.
Not a single one? Okay. And what do, what happens to the bonus cats, more than 50 more than now, or more than 100 later? How, how are they handled? Do they go to the SPCA, somewhere else, if there are more than their quota?
So, so the cats that exceed that number? Well, that was a number chosen that, that they hopefully never intend to reach, that would give them that leeway, that if they have to keep cats on site, that they would be able to do so.
Which is why they had 50, they didn't ever want to have 50.
Exactly.
And, so they've gone over that. And I, as I recall, we, do you guys remember that we kind of assured the neighbors that we... we weren't going to increase the number? I have a memory of that being a concern.
I think that's why they sent the notifications out, reps the notification, which you said, 20 places or?
Okay.
If memory serves, there was one neighbor that spoke in opposition back in 2013. He's since relocated, has sold his house shortly thereafter, so he's no longer down there. But as far as this particular amendment, we've not received any opposition to it.
Can I add something now? Can I wait?
Oh, we wait. Unless you have a question.
No, it's a comment.
Generally, how do they compute the average?
It would be a daily average over the month, yes.
Every day?
Mm-hmm.
Or per the month?
Yeah, you would take it, daily population at the end of the month, calculate the average. Yes, sir.
How do they count cats? I mean.
They keep very good records. I'm very impressed with their bookkeeping.
Very careful.
They know every cat that's there.
Those are fools.
All right. Anything else for him? All right. This is a public hearing, and I'm going to open that public hearing on this request and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak. I did think I saw one on this list. Tracy Burnett?
Hello, thank you for coming. I'm the co-manager of the Pecosin Animal Welfare Sanctuary. Myself and I will tell you, Henry's wife are the two co-managers. I've been at this about two years, and first and foremost, let me tell you, we don't want 100 cats at 181 Messick Road. We do not want that. The reason that we need that number is because Pecosin has a lot of feral cats in its community, all right? We have already fixed more than 700 of them, and more than 700 since we've been in existence. And you know what? We're not even close to probably what is out there that you can't see.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it appropriate for me to ask our question?
Sure.
Okay. Feral cats, do you always relocate them to PAWS?
No.
Or do you, you do sometimes release them back to where they came from after they've been fixed?
Yes. Let me give my little speech.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, I'll be as quick as I possibly can, so you guys can, we can get on with business.
Thank you.
We don't want 100. Virginia law, first of all, designates that every single cat and dog is considered a domesticated animal, okay? That is really not true. A feral cat is much like a raccoon or a squirrel. You can't touch them, you have to trap them, they're not going to come up to you, they're going to hide most of the time. They're all over this city, so they're going to be hidden. So the Virginia law saying that kind of throws a little monkey wrench into a few things. Our goal is to spay and neuter all the feral cats within this city over a period of five years. We've already been at it hard for the past two. Like I said, we've already hit more than 700. We went from the initial two years at less than 350 to 700 by last year. So that's 350 cats, 344 to be precise, is how many we fixed last year. Of those 344, 200 of them roughly were returned where they came from. We don't try to put them at the sanctuary. The other 144 were adopted out. So here's the scoop. If a cat is friendly, we try to adopt it out. If we trap it somewhere, for example, just this year, I think I'm at number 68, and I am the main trapper, so nobody else particularly likes to do that, so that's what I like to do. We fixed, in Shady Oaks, I'm trying to think, I think the number was 47 last year. I'm at about 10 already this year, 25 the year before that. That's a lot of feral cats just in Shady Oaks. Just off of Brown's Neck Road, I've gotten 10 at York Haven Marina, nine more at Owens Marina. That's this year, and I have not even touched. I know there's probably 50 of them, all in that reeded area, and that's just a guess on me, because I know that one female can have three litters in a year at an average of four cats per litter. So if you do that math, you seem to be pretty good at math, think of how many we have prevented from being born within this city. The Peninsula Regional Animal Shelter is 25% owned by the city of Pecosin. Not owned, but operated by. Each district has a 25% say, and the amount of money that each district spends at the regional animal shelter is based on the population of the city. That's my understanding. Peninsula Regional Animal Shelter euthanized 2,000 healthy cats last year, 2,000 of them, because people failed to get them spay-neutered, they throw them out like yesterday's garbage, they move. It's illegal to do that, but how can you police that? Unless somebody turns them in and spends a lot of money following up with lawyers and so and so forth, you just can't police that. More cats, I think we're at like 15 this year, of adults that are friendly, that we would like to adopt out, that someone has moved out of this city and thrown them out the door. That's terrible. But what we do to try to help that situation, we scoop them up, we take them, we get them all vaccinated, we get them fixed if they're not fixed, everything done, we put their pictures at Pecosin Vet, we put them on all the local little websites, Pecosin 411, so forth. We do everything that we're supposed to do according to the law to try to find those owners, and if we don't, then we put them up for adoption, and we've actually been very, very successful at doing that. Last year, to just give you a number to tell you how well it's working, last year at this time, about three to four weeks ago, we had 44 kittens from Pecosin in our possession, waiting for them to get old enough to be adopted. 44 Pecosin kittens. This year, we only have six. So I think that that speaks volumes about how well we're doing. It's the least expensive way to do it is to, we call it TNR, trap, spay, neuter, and return them. So basically, the scoop is whoever's land those cats live on, that's where we return them to. We make, we talk to people before we do it, we don't go on people's property generally and just go do that. We get permission, usually people like if it were behind your house.
Right.
I would go behind your house, have your permission, we fix them, we ear-tip them. An ear-tip, by the way, is a universal sign. If the left ear is tipped, that means that cat has been fixed and is vaccinated, okay? So we work very hard to do that. So I would get a call, they'd say, okay, we've got a problem over behind Tracy's house. I would get your permission, I'd go back there, I'd fix, I'd return all of those cats the day that they were fixed, they would go live the rest of their life, and we would work out a deal where you or somebody right by you would be feeding and monitoring that colony, and that's what we do all over this city. We have, whoa, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 colonies throughout the city now that have 9 to, like I said, I think there's 84 in Shady Oaks. So those are some big, big colonies that are out there, but they're fed, they're monitored, they're fixed, and they're not reproducing anymore. And so the numbers that the city of Pecosin is sending to Peninsula Regional are minimal, which means that when people come to us and ask us to adopt kitties, we can go pull them out of the regional center and help prevent some more of those cats from being euthanized, which is really not fair to the cats because they didn't do anything. They're not the ones that are, you know, not following through. Personally, I would like to help legislation to make it illegal to even adopt one until they are spayed or neutered in this state. California has that law. People can't even pick them up until they're at the vet and already fixed before they take them home. But I think that's all I had to say. Does anybody have any questions? Because I'd be happy to answer anything. Yes, sir.
Have we had any instance of rabid cats?
No, sir. The only one I can think of is before I went to PAWS, and that was in Shady Oaks. And that was three years ago, I think.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Also have, let me see. I have one person that didn't have marked by their name what they wanted to speak about, and that was Mary Clemmons.
I'm here for number three.
Okay, thank you. And I know Don Davis is here for three, Janet Andrews is here for three, Lonnie LaGrand. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on the PAWS issue? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification to an existing conditional use permit to operate a pet sanctuary at 181 Messick Road, Pecosin Tax Map Parcel Number
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. We expand the conditional use permit from 50 to 100. Hearing that they really don't want 100, but it'll help them manage more effectively. Don't have anything else to say? Anybody got questions or comments?
I have a concern, and I think what PAWS does is wonderful. I mean, I've donated to PAWS, I think it's a great service, and I will likely vote for this. But I don't want to keep upping this number. I don't think it's fair to any of the residents there. This is a residential neighborhood. I don't want it to become bigger than what it should be. I don't want it to keep growing.
I can, can I address one more thing? Is that a point? No?
I think you'll be all right, but I think you understand the point.
I understand what she's saying. Basically, you get the 100, sorry.
All right, I think you covered it, and I think you were pretty upfront with us, so I appreciate that. Any, anything else? Go ahead, Hannah.
Just one thing along. This was on our agenda, I think, a few meetings back, or five or six meetings back. There'd been plans in place to do something along this nature, but it got moved forward because we had, like an emergency situation happened a few, like a month or so ago, where 19 or 20 of the cats were all of a sudden immediately had to go to the sanctuary and put us in violation of our number. So this was a part and parcel, part of that, to know that we have these extra cats, 21 to 22 extra cats that we received at the sanctuary, they received at the sanctuary. They changed that equation, they want to stay within the letter of the law. So with these 25, these cats were feral cats that were in a managed colony that were offended, and so they got stuck with another 22 cats that they didn't plan on getting. And I'll be honest with you, the mission of this group, and as hard as they work, their mission is to shut that sucker down one day. I'm telling you, it's, and hopefully with the way they're doing it, and the numbers I'm seeing, and the numbers we're seeing, and the numbers the cities are seeing, this is exactly what TNR is all about. TNR is to do just what it does, they did it on Tangier Island, and at one time, they had more cats than people on that island, and this Hope for Life group went in and did all this, and now the cat population is dwindling rapidly.
Right.
Because these cats would die out due to attrition. So hopefully, as much as I love cats, I would like not to have to feed 20 every morning.
Well, I think just their numbers, number adopted, they're doing this city a great service.
And please come visit it. If you haven't been there, that was the last thing I wanted to say, please come visit and see what they're doing at the sanctuary.
I don't think there's anything but high regard here, council, so that's why I think this is pretty easy. But Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Somebody from the Planning Commission gonna start the next video? You can come up here while I ask for a, to be Debbie or, yeah, come on up, get yourself running. Can I have a motion from council to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 9?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting, May 9, 2016.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve those minutes. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
What timing. All right, so now we have a request of Davidson Associates, PC.
Church, not, not this one.
I'm sorry, did y'all change it?
No.
Number two. Oh, sorry. This is a request of Emes Baptist Church to modify its existing conditional use permit by expanding the current Christian Outreach Center to include additional office and education space on church property located at 828 Yorktown Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. This, just like the last request, is a modification of an existing conditional use permit. Specifically, this one was granted in 1999 for the construction of the Christian Outreach Center that you can see in this photo here, which is a 7,200 square foot facility, certainly not a characteristic of a typical residential district. The property is zoned R1, and as such, required a conditional use permit to construct. The property is located near the intersection of Emes Road and Yorktown Road. The property itself is actually two separate parcels, 814 and 828 Yorktown Road. The Outreach Center is on the same parcel as the church's parsonage, and collectively, the parcels are about 10 acres or so. So it's pretty substantial. Granted, a good amount of that space is cemetery or reserved for cemetery use. As I mentioned, actually, correction, it's zoned RS, it's on the border of the R1 district, but still single-family residentially zoned. The, it has operated in conformance with its issued permit, just like the last request. We've never received any complaints. Initially, with the issuance of the conditional use permit back in 1999, there were some concerns about parking, parking strain on the facility that has apparently been a non-issue for the church. However, the construction, the additional 2,400 square feet will have to be, would require a site plan amendment, so they would have to submit a new site plan for the site. And as such, they would have to meet the new parking requirements as required by the site plan. Here's a closer view. It's my understanding, it's actually going to be on the front side of this building. So approximately 10 or a dozen or so spaces, parking spaces, will have to be relocated somewhere on the site. Like I said, we'll work through that during the site plan process. But the facade of the new building will match what you see on your, right there, the education building, more so than the, what you see on the left, which is the existing Christian Outreach Center. So that would be a slight upgrade, at least from aesthetically, facade. This is just looking down Yorktown Road towards the current sanctuary. Everything in question is to our left, going back to South Emes. Like in the last request, this would take amendment of one condition. Originally, there were only three conditions with this one. The other two regard, well, one parking and the other maintaining a green buffer with the residents on South Emes, which has been done. But this would simply require the, an amendment from 7,200 square feet to 9,600 square feet to accommodate the request by the applicant. The Planning Commission met last week and have recommended this unanimously for your approval.
Okay, then I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone that's here this evening that would like to speak on the subject. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification to an existing conditional use permit for the Christian Outreach Center located at 828 Yorktown Road, Pecosin Tax Map Parcel Number 1801000145.
Second. Any motion made and seconded? We approve this. Any concerns or questions or discussion by council? Now, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, who's next up at the page? All right, now I'm at the request, sorry, I checked off one too far down on my agenda. Request of Davidson Associates, PC agent, and Shirley F. Hawn, or, Halgan, property owner for variances to sections 5.2, a variate of ordinances here as it relates to the primary plan submittal. These include street and sidewalk minimum improvements, utilities, fire protection, streetlight requirements, in order to subdivide eight acres located on the intersection of Hunts Neck Road and Bayview Drive. Debbie, I assume you are going to give us a presentation?
I am, sir. Thank you very much, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. As you read, the Hoggans are asking for subdivision ordinance variances in order to subdivide their property located at 284 Hunts Neck Road into nine lots with benefit of certain subdivision variances. The parcel itself, and bear with me, figure out what I'm supposed to do. The parcel itself is located at the corner of Hunts Neck Road and Bayview Drive, and it measures just over eight acres in size, and it's rectangle. it measures just over eight acres in size, and it's rectangular in shape. It's unique in that it has a significant amount of road frontage. It fronts on both Hunts Neck Road on the south, on the west by Bayview Drive, and on the north by Bayview Drive. So therefore, there's approximately six hundred linear feet of street frontage as it relates to certain improvements that the development, I mean, that the applicants must do as a part of the subdivision process. Currently, the property is vacant, with the exception that there is a small private cemetery that will be preserved during the subdivision process. We have some pictures here to kind of give you an idea as to what the existing roadway conditions are at the property. This, of course, is a view of Hunts Neck Road across from Carroll Drive, and the property is on the other side of Hunts Neck Road. This part of the street is on the south side of the property. This is the corner, or the beginning of the corner, at Bayview and Hunts Neck Road, and I'll point out that these existing conditions is exactly what the applicants are proposing in their application. They are asking not to put in the typical requirements of street upgrades and utility upgrades that's required in order to create a nine-lot division. So therefore, the telephone pole that you see in this particular slide would have to be taken down and all the utilities installed underground. This is a shot of Bayview Drive along the western boundary of the property. This is by far the longest stretch of roadway frontage, and it continues on to the northern boundary of the property at a curb, actually two curves on Bayview Drive. Bayview Drive is the entrance point to the Pecoson Shore subdivision, which is a residential waterfront subdevelopment that was created in the late sixties with some build-out occurring more recently with the extension of public sewer. There's approximately one hundred homes in that subdivision that traverses Bayview Drive and Hunts Neck Road for ingress and egress purposes. This is not very good at all, but this basically, it was included in your agenda package, and hopefully is a little bit more visible. This is the layout of the subdivision itself. Like I mentioned earlier, the property will be divided into nine lots, with each lot having direct frontage on a public street. Each lot will also measure between point six and one and a half acres in size. Access to the property will not be provided by an interior street. Rather, each lot will have its own driveway opening onto either Hunts Neck Road or Bayview Some other aspects of subdividing property that we have to consider during the plan review stage, and what did I just do, Kevin?
Okay. How come it's not going the way it's supposed to?
I know I'm doing it wrong. Okay. I'm sorry. There we go. Okay. There's three basic aspects, environmental aspects of the development that we have to look at early on, but actually is not finalized until we're at the plan review stage. So therefore, the first thing we're always concerned about is whether or not there's any existence of wetlands on the property. This particular site has been delineated by the Corps of Engineers and has been found free of any type of non-titled wetlands, and of course, there are no other wetlands on the property as well. It also enjoys, most of the property enjoys a category of being outside the floodplain, which is just mind-boggling to me, given its location, but nevertheless, its elevation is prompting that designation. However, there's a portion of the property that is identified as an AE seven according to our federal flood insurance risk map, which means that when they go to construct their homes, based on our current flood zone requirements, they would have to build it ten feet above mean sea level to meet that three-foot freeboard requirement. And then finally, stormwater management. Typically, whenever you're processing a larger subdivision, we're always concerned about trying to create a unified stormwater management system on the development, which is basically maintained by all of the landowners. However, most of that, most of the time, that's required in trying to meet the stormwater regulations, given the scale of development improvements compared to the size of each lot. In this particular instance, given that the lots itself are so large, and we expect that the development improvements to be fairly small in comparison, we anticipate the stormwater can be handled through individual lot onsite mitigation measures, which means landscaping and/or other type of onsite features, which will take this development outside of a unified requirement, but just place it on the responsibility on the individual landowners. The provisions that are being asked for this evening seems like a huge laundry list, and it is, because there's subsections that are involved with various development categories, and I'm going to go through those very quickly with you. The first section that is on the screen is section five dash two. Forget that. The city attorney has told me that that provision, which requires a preliminary plan process, does not apply in this particular instance. So therefore, we're now focusing on the development improvements that are required. And basically, under ten dash one dash four of the subdivision ordinance, that deals with the design criteria for street systems, and it is governed by three specific subsections, which basically states that the road has to be widened, it has to be paved, and it has to have curb and gutter, and it has to be graded properly. The next provisions apply to sidewalks, and there are four different, no, there's five different provisions that fall under the sidewalk category, and that's specifically because we were very detailed when we developed those provisions to apply specific standards. So whenever you're applying not to include a sidewalk, then you would also apply for those provisions as well. And moving on, the next provision is ten dash one dash five, which basically requires that all streets at the curb and gutter be installed at an elevation of four and a half feet above sea level. Then we move into the following sections where underground utilities are required, which, as I mentioned before, the telephone pole that you saw in the picture would have to be taken down, and all the utilities associated with that placed underground. That's a part of a roadway improvement. Fire prevention, that provision has been included in this provision, but I think Mr. Davis is going to address that with you this evening. The problem with a fire prevention variance, or any type of relief, we don't know that it applies, to be perfectly honest with you, until we get to the end of the subdivision review process, because we rely on Newport News Water Works and the fire chief to determine the fire needs for that property. So until it's actually analyzed, and Newport News Water Works will not review a development plan until we're at the final approval stage, then we don't know what the fire protection requirements would be. However, if you choose not to approve that variance, and if they decide in the future that they want to come back and ask for that variance, it will require another hearing before City Council. And we talked about the underground utilities and street lighting. And subdivisions in the city, street lighting is required at a spacing of three hundred feet apart. The applicants, of course, would be asking for a waiver to that requirement. Okay. All of the infrastructure improvements that the Hoggins are asking for relief from are already in place in the subdivision ordinance under three provisions. Specifically, the first is the two-lot and the three-lot subdivision, which we refer to as a minor subdivision, but is more specifically defined in the subdivision ordinance as a definitional exception, which means that all of the public street improvements and utilities are not required. A two- and three-lot subdivision can be established with a private street and utility system. That same principle also applies to a family subdivision, with the exception, with a family subdivision, the nice thing is, is that I guess you can yield up to five lots. However, there is a restriction that you must convey the parcel, or each parcel that's created in the family subdivision, to an immediate family member who must maintain that parcel for a period of three years. I promise I'm almost finished. The variance criteria, according to section seven dash three of the subdivision ordinance, there's allowances in that provision to afford individuals that own property an opportunity to request a variance based on a technical issue. And in order for the variance to be approved, the City Council must find that the conditions or circumstances involved in the request are unique in nature. And basically, there's four criteria that you must consider, and one of which is that you first identify what is the hardship, and is that an undue hardship that is not shared by other people in the same zoning district? Will that hardship, or will the granting of the variance substantially change the character of the surrounding area, or negatively impact the surrounding area in any way? Is the problem reoccurring in nature as to where it would be more appropriate for there to be a change to the ordinance instead of an actual variance being granted? Going back to the technical aspect, a hardship is really considered very technical in nature, meaning that the hardship should be relative to dimension or topography of the property, and again, it should be unique to the surrounding area. And then finally, if the City Council so chooses, they can apply, or they can apply conditions to their approval to safeguard against, or to safeguard for the inclusion of certain improvements in the future by a bonding requirement. And I'm sure Wayne can help you with that a little bit more than I can. We don't process variances very often anymore. Finally, the property is uniquely located. It's bedded deeply into the RS zoning district at the western end of the city, and as I mentioned earlier, the surrounding road network that lies adjacent to the property is basically servicing an area that's already built out. So there's not expected to see a lot of change in the future. Future growth is probably not going to happen along this stretch of the road. Again, the property has over sixteen hundred linear feet of road frontage, and is surrounded by smaller subdivision lots with a street network that is substandard, for the most part, around, or adjacent to this property. The Planning Commission considered this request at its meeting last Monday evening, and during that public hearing, we had one individual, landowner in the adjoining Pecoson Shore subdivision, that addressed the commission and expressed some concerns over drainage impacts and the fairness of applying ordinances, ordinance requirements to everyone to safeguard the public interest. Following that discussion, or following the public hearing, the commission voted unanimously by six to zero to recommend denial of the request for three specific reasons. One, they could not find that there was any justification for the variance, and there was concern that the variance would only allude to allowing for the property owners an unfair financial advantage over other developers that have applied with the requirements in the past. And then finally, they were concerned about the precedence that this would establish for future requests. With that said, I'd like just to, hold on. All right, I messed it up again. Well, what I want to show you is Hunts Neck Estates, and because Hunts Neck Estates is a very similar development situation, it was built in the early two thousands, and it has frontage on two streets, Edwards Road and Hunts Neck Road. Under both of those circumstances, thank you, under both of those circumstances, Edwards Road was upgraded with curb and gutter, as would be required along Bayview Drive and Hunts Neck Road, and this slide is a perfect presentation of that, where you have the curb and gutter on one side of Edwards Road, but you do not have it on the other side. So that was one of the reasons why the Planning Commission elected not to approve this request, because they felt like that there's real opportunity here to get, especially Hunts Neck Road, upgraded to help with relieve its suffering narrow width and pavement width, right away pavement width. With that said, I'll be happy answering questions that you may have.
Councilman Green?
I've got a couple of questions, David. Referring to that picture right there, why are there no sidewalks on that one? Did they get a variance for the sidewalk?
The sidewalk requirement was not in place at that time.
Okay. The other question is, under section ten dash one dash five, street elevation, can they even achieve that, only building on one side of two streets? Can they achieve the elevation without messing the drainage up on the existing street?
Well, it's very hard for me to answer that question, given that we're at such a conceptual plan stage, but I would assume that it's going to be very difficult for them to meet any of those street requirements unless they do the full-fledged upgrade. And then that could, of course, cause some grading to occur from the center point of the street backwards.
Does curb and gutter help us anyway on our TMDL credits at all?
Not that I'm, no, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? I've only got one. Debbie, if this was, if this same acreage was basically done in accordance with our ordinance, how many, how many yacht lots would you give?
Well, there's a couple of different options. The open space development ordinance, thank you, the open space development ordinance would allow them most likely a yield of ten lots, but keep in mind that with the open space ordinance, you can shrink down the size of the lot in exchange for preserving fifty percent of the area for open space. So they would have to take fifty percent of that and reserve it for open space. Under a traditional subdivision, we had that same discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, and I think the number that we came up with was like thirteen to fifteen lots.
Thank you. Any other questions for David? All right, and I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'll ask for Don Davis. I think it'd probably be helpful if you'd speak first.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, staff members. My name is Donald Davis, the land surveyor. We're located at thirty-six thirty George Washington Memorial Highway in Yorktown. I'm here tonight representing the Higgins who own the property. They've owned this for about fifteen or sixteen years now. It's a eight-acre parcel. Mr. Miss Higgins, or to my right here on the front row. They have decided now, after owning this piece of property for a substantial period of time, that they would like to develop the property. And first, I think it's important to say that they want to build their own personal house here and be able to move to this location. Next door, they want to build a house for their son to be able to build and be able to move to the same location also. So we're not doing this just for the development of the site itself, it would allow the owners to be able to have very nicely sized lots. And one of the first things that they told me when they came to see me is that they wanted to be able to develop their property, but they weren't interested in having the maximum number of lots that they could get at this site. We've looked at this, and we think we could get, based on a cluster type or open space subdivision, that we could get somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirteen, up to about fifteen lots here. We're not proposing to do that. Our minimum-sized lot under the RS zoning district is twenty-six thousand seven hundred square feet, but the lots go up to sixty-four thousand plus. The average lot here is in the neighborhood of about thirty-eight to thirty-nine thousand square feet. So it's substantially larger than what would normally be allowed. This is a very unique, I believe, piece of property. It's unique in that it has, again, about eight acres, but it has so much long road frontage. I've worked on a number of properties over the years, and I can't think of one that meets this requirement with such long road frontage, especially where we have a public roadway. And that public roadway serves very well the adjacent and the property owners that are nearby. As Debbie indicated earlier- As Debbie indicated earlier, we don't anticipate that there would be little, if any, additional development in the area. There are no existing curb and gutter sections that are located across the street from this piece of property. There are some curb and gutter that are down the street, but none in this particular area. To change the character of this neighborhood, I believe, would have a major impact on the area itself. We have stormwater management, open ditch type streets that are located here now on both roadways. That would require, if we put curb and gutter here, to pipe that entire area. And piping is not quite as friendly for stormwater standards as the standards we use if we have a properly seeded and earthswale. It would require us to increase the amount of impervious here dramatically to be able to put a area of asphalt and then curb and gutter here. Now, some of the things I'd like to talk about tonight is that we're not proposing any new streets. We'd like to keep the street section the same that it is. We'd like to keep the cemetery exactly as it is. We'd like to set it aside as a restrictive covenant to be recorded so that it would be maintained. Right now, it's not maintained as well as it probably could be, but be maintained in a like manner that would go along with the deed. Streetlights, we understand that we probably will have to put streetlights here. And some of the things that Debbie went through earlier in her presentation are things that we believe that we're going to have to do those things. What we're really down to are the, is the curb and gutter out here. We're suggesting for sidewalks, that if sidewalks are not approved, that what we would do would be, as the subdivision plat is recorded, that anyone buying a lot, and at the time the building permit is issued, that that lot would be required to put the proper sidewalk in. Now, we also would like to make sure that the fire marshal has a chance to look at this. We don't know what the fire marshal is going to require at this time. We work typically with the fire marshal as far as fire protection. We also work with Newport News Water Works. Whatever the requirement is, will be the requirement for this subdivision. We're not trying to do anything that's different than what is normally required. I think I've hit most of those areas through here, but I think the most important thing is this is a public roadway that serves, services the property as it exists today. And to make a change in this would have a major impact. And one of the things that the planning commission talked about last week was the issue about recreating, is there a hardship here? If you think about it, it's very difficult to categorize why hardship is not being created here. And really, our hardship is that if we put additional impervious area, we put curbs and gutters here that probably, because of the no development in the area, will occur, it will be like putting a Band-Aid on the edge of your thumb. It's going to be there, probably will serve very little in the future. We think really that the hardship is that we would, by doing this, would be a substantial amount of cost, forgetting the cost, but to put in a section, a cross-section here that probably will never be used in the future. Now, the roadway is still going to remain exactly as it is. We're proposing, again, fewer lots than could be proposed at this particular site. The area itself that we talked about for the preliminary plan, I think Mr. Wayne Moore talked about earlier, that that's not a requirement. So we'd like for that to go away. As far as the variance itself, the only one that we really believe that we need is going to be the variance that will deal with the issue about curb and gutter here. We will make sure that stormwater management is at N or is greater than with the current DCR standards and DEQ standards for the state of Virginia. We would, if required to, we would put any utilities underground that exist there today. We're not asking for a waiver on that. And again, we'll deal with the fire marshal and Newport News Water Works. I'd be glad to entertain any questions. This is somewhat of a thorny issue, if you will, because some of the things here are involved, but we really try and like to hone in and target in on what we're really talking about here. If we're going to be putting more impervious area out here, if we're going to be making a roadway that, larger, that probably will never be built on the other side of the road. And if you take a look at the northwest side of both of these roads, I think it's fair to say that nothing will ever occur on the other side of the roadway. And there was one picture I'd like to, if I could, just take a look here to the right. I remember working on this years ago. And one of the reasons why, and the curb and gutter was required here, but that road was grossly substandard at that particular time. The pavement that was out there was actually needed. It was what I call an old county-type street. By putting the curb and gutter in that additional asphalt on that side, it widened the street enough where you had proper through traffic there. We don't really need that. We've got, in this area, we've got about a substantial number, about a thousand lots that are in the general area, much further, that are out towards the end of the roadway. But the road that's there now is at current standards. If it's not at current BDOT standards for the width of the road, we'll make it at current standards. At the planning commission meeting, I talked a little bit about what the actual requirement is, and I took a look after I got back, and the minimum is twenty-four feet wide with open ditch streets. And we would, if we have to, we'll upgrade the street to that standard. I'd be glad to try and answer any questions if I could. And again, I'd like to try and target it on really the issues about what we're talking about tonight.
Go ahead, if you have a question.
One question, can you allude again to what you're talking about with the sidewalks, what you could talk about the individual lot owners would have to do in regards to sidewalks?
It's a suggestion that I made to Ms. Vest earlier today, is that what we would do would be to show that sidewalks would be put there along the roadway so that people could walk up and down the road. And when the individual building permit was issued, that that would be a requirement that the builder or the owner at that particular time would put the sidewalk in. Now, that might have to be guaranteed by some type of bond or letter of credit to be able to do that. But again, we think that's a very reasonable way to do it. Again, they want to build these houses for themselves and for their son. They're not developers in the normal sense of the word. They want to be able to, be able to do this and move forward and possibly sell off a lot or two in the near future.
And just a comment after my question, a couple of things that the planning commission added that are of concern. They're not developers now, but they have another seven lots that they're going to be potentially developing. So they're going to become developers or have a developer come in and develop those pieces of property. And I am concerned about the unfair advantage that does give to folks that are having to pay the extra additional fees for the upgrades, and the folks that are already in town right now and have come into town and have had to meet these upgrades. So that's just a concern.
We understand that, and we understand that concern. And that's the reason we're trying to talk through the reason for this tonight.
That's a big one.
Is there any investigation into the capacity of the existing sewer pumping station to service that many additional?
We've had a number of meetings about this issue over a substantial period of time, and we haven't had any indication that there's a problem with the pump station or being able to have a moratorium that would be required for this.
That conversation, be it final development, I mean, that's when you hone it in, right?
That's right. I'm unaware of any sewer issue.
Right.
Could you talk about the underground utilities again, taking the pole out and burying them? You sort of talked about that, but I didn't follow it.
If we have to put, to meet the requirement for underground utilities, and first of all, it'll be backup just a little bit on the other side, any utilities that go to these new homes that are constructed will have to have underground utilities, period. All of them will. Any utilities that violate the intent of the subdivision ordinance that require underground utilities will have to be put underground.
Okay. So if that's the case, I didn't understand why you were requesting a waiver for it.
I'm getting a little confused myself, isn't it? Some of all of the things that you've talked about here tell me that maybe there's, are we asking for too much here? That's what I'm basically saying. I mean, it sounds like we're wavering from several statutes. Does not sound good, right? So, but what I hear you saying is that underground utilities is going to go away. So I guess, really, Debbie, if you can come back up and kind of keep us clear on, let's go through each one of these one by one.
Okay. To answer the question about the underground utilities, I think we should not get confused with the fact that the underground utilities that will go from the street to the house will be underground. But are you proposing to actually install the lines that traverse across Bayview Drive with the pole on the Hoggan property? Will that be placed underground?
If we have to, because of the location where the right-of-way lines are located, we would put it underground.
Would you basically say you're going to put it underground so it's not a waiver?
We would put it underground.
So which section would that remove if they did that?
Ten-four B.
Sorry, it sounds kind of like we're negotiating up here, and that's not the intent. I just want to make sure that I understand exactly what we're doing here.
Well, I think what Debbie has done is, I think she's really helped us out here, because she's thrown a lot of things out here, and she said, let's get them all out here, and let's talk about these, which things that we need to get variances on, the ones we maybe don't have to get variances on, and some things, we don't have any choices about them, like the fire marshal and water works. We don't have any choices about it.
Okay. Section ten dash four B is, requires the underground utilities. Section ten dash five requires the fire hydrants.
By the way, that's a federal standard. It's not only our standard and your standard, that's a federal standard.
Then section ten dash six requires street lighting, which would mean...
Are you prepared to do the street lighting in the area?
Are you prepared to do the street lights?
Maximum?
Yes.
Is that a, that's a city ordinance?
Yes.
Hate the street lights.
Keep crying, Dan.
I hate the street lights.
Okay. All right, so then, what, section five point two did not apply, right?
Right.
So we're at ten dash one dash one. What is that?
Okay, ten dash one dash one requires the installation of street pavement, the widening of the street.
Widening of the street.
That's the, that's the main road.
It is.
Ten dash one dash two is going to pertain to the curb and gutter requirement.
Okay.
And ten dash one dash three is going to pertain to grading of the street.
Okay.
Let me just touch on that.
What is, yeah, go ahead. Let's come back to grading of the street. What would that require?
We're going to have a problem if we have to grade that street. That street functions and functions well now. It has a very deep roadside ditch that carries the water very nicely out there. And again, we're not trying to add impervious area. We're trying to keep it at the minimum amount and keep our BNP's to a minimum. We would propose to keep that street at the elevation that it is. Now, what you heard just a short time ago is that we have parts of this area that are in a Zone X and parts that are Zone AE seven. Although we haven't done a final survey, a topographic survey of the property, we don't believe that it would have to be raised to meet that requirement, but I can't verify that today.
Okay. What's ten-one-four?
Okay, so the balance pertains to sidewalks. So that includes ten point one dash four, ten point one dash four point one, and ten point one dash four point two, ten point one dash four point three, ten point one dash four dash four. And all of those pertain to be designed for sidewalks.
How about ten dash one dash four point five?
That's street grade.
Street grade.
And that's the one that requires that the gutter pan be at four and a half foot.
Okay. All right, got it. All right. I know more now than I knew before. Okay. Okay. And I think the one thing that I've heard here that I would not be a fan of is doing sidewalks by individual property owners. So I think if y'all can get through some of that stuff, then maybe we've got something.
What's concerning about the sidewalks, if we don't do something like that now, in twenty-five years, the Nets Council's going to be talking about a three-way stop sign.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway, all right. But I get that to, have y'all got any other questions of Don? And we have some other speakers here.
So that I'm clear, then, five dash two doesn't apply because we, you can't require preliminary plan.
Correct.
And I gather what's being said is that they're not asking for a variance under ten dash four B. Four B is the, all utilities will be traversing the subdivision shall be placed underground. I think they're saying they're not asking for that.
Correct.
So that would come off of the request. Ten dash five would come off the request because they're not asking to waive fire protection requirements.
Correct.
And ten dash six would come off because they're not asking a waiver for streetlights.
That's my understanding.
So from the list I'm looking at, that leaves ten dash one dash one through ten dash one dash four point five, all of those dealing with either street, street grades, or sidewalks. Am I right, Don? Is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Just to make sure we had the right waiver sections in here.
Thank you. And we'd have to formalize that, right? We'd have to get that formalized, I'm assuming.
In your resolution, that would, whatever sections you waive will have to be enumerated in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else, Don?
No.
Any other question?
Well, would that take care of the requirement of curb and gutter? In other words, if we leave those in, it looks like to me they still have...
I didn't, I'm, I'm only getting to what the proponent has agreed is not part of his recommendation. The other things are still, they're still requesting the others. Whether you grant them or not, that's up to you.
Right.
I'm not trying to establish what you're doing. I'm trying to make sure I'm clear what Mr. Davis is asking for.
If the only thing we say they don't have to do as far as the right-of-way is required, the sidewalks, what do we eliminate that they won't have to put in curb and gutter?
Okay, well, ten dash one deals with streets and alleys, ten dash one dash two deals with grades, and ten dash one dash three deals with pavement widths. That's all street.
Right. So what...
And if I'm then on, it's all sidewalk.
So what I, what I believe, to just kind of simplify it, and please, Wayne, or Don, correct me if I'm wrong here, but what I'm hearing is, you have a piece of property that's got sixteen hundred feet of road frontage. You believe the road, this is, you're asking council to decide whether the road is sufficient to handle nine separate driveways on the road, and the driveways would basically be just a pipe in the existing ditch that serviced the lots. And you're asking for that because it's already on an existing road and because the drainage, we would actually cause more harm, this is your work, all right, more harm by adding impervious surface than by leaving it as is.
That's correct.
That's, that's the kind of the, just kind of shaping what council needs to be thinking about.
Right, but it would be more than just pipe. It would be a pipe and an apron, because if they dedicate the right-of-way, we require an apron.
We will still put an apron there.
Yeah.
A paved apron.
Yeah.
It just wouldn't be one that ties into curb and gutter.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, so just trying to shape what, what is in council's lane, right?
If you're familiar with that property, it's considerably higher in elevation than the existing roadway. So I would suspect it would be a rather long driveway cutting back into that property. And the amount of piping would have to be rather substantial when it got to the ditch.
It is, and one of the things I didn't point out tonight is that back about almost four weeks ago, if you remember, we were supposed to come to city council at the end of April, and we asked to postpone the application so that we could make sure we were getting information out to people as best we could. And I will tell you, we didn't notify every person in the city of Pecosa, but we did the best we could. We put together copies of plats, asked people to come to the meeting, they walked up and down the street, especially the ones that touched this piece of property, especially on the other side of the road, and asked these people to come to a meeting. And we had about fourteen to sixteen people that showed up for this meeting to explain it to them. We gave everyone who wanted one a copy of the plat and told them what we were doing. We gave everyone who wanted one a copy of the plat and told them what we were doing. No one that night said that they had a problem with what we were proposing to do. And these are all people who live mainly across the street.
Okay. I just tried to, the only reason I said that, so I kind of wanted to shape for, not only myself, but for the audience to understand what it is that's actually being asked for. So I think I got that now. Not saying we're moving anywhere on that. Are there any other questions of Don? Okay.
I'm certainly available if I can help any...
All right. We have other people that want to speak on this issue. Jan Andrews?
Jan Andrews, Seven Martha Court. I was at the planning commission meeting for a different reason and heard this public hearing, and it raised some concerns with me. I don't live in that area, so I don't have concerns in that way. And I have no problems with what they want to do with their property, because I think property owners should be able to do what they want with their property. But my concern is that the precedence that this will set for a homeowner who is essentially becoming a developer, because this isn't a family subdivision, they're not doing it as a minor subdivision, they will be a developer who will develop these lots and sell them just as a developer would, but yet they don't want to pay the cost that a developer would have to pay. And the reason that concerns me is, there's a lot right on the corner of Buntingham-Pecosin Avenue by my house that is owned by a family that nothing's happened to it because they can't agree for anybody to buy it, but one day this could be that same property. And, or, you know, my thought would be, what if a developer owned this property and it wasn't a family? Would we be considering saying, okay, developer, you don't need to do the curb and gutter. You don't need to do the sidewalks. You don't need to do this. I think you have to treat everybody the same, whether they're an individual homeowner or whether they're a developer. You know, we put these things in place for a reason. And I think anytime we can get, we can get some curb and gutter and we can get rid of some ditches and get our roads widened, I think is a, is a good thing. If you don't want to do that, then we should change the, you know, change the ordinances. But they're there for a reason, I would assume. And my fear is that we allow a homeowner to get away with not doing those things, and then a developer's going to come in and buy an eight acre parcel and is going to come to you and say, but you let them do it. You waived it for them. Here's the exact same circumstance. Why wouldn't you waive it for me? I mean, heck, if this is the way it is, then I might start going and looking at some eight acre properties that I could develop without having to spend these costs. You know, I understand why they wouldn't want to do this, because it is costly, but finance is not a reason for hardship, which is why I think the planning commission denied that. And so I would support their decision and the reasons that they gave. I think those are valid reasons to not allow this, you know, for a homeowner. They do have the option of doing a family subdivision or a minor subdivision, and then they don't have any of these requirements. You know, we have that in place for them to do that. I just wouldn't want to see us open the door for a developer to come in, because there's a lot of small lots like this in Pecosin, and be able to develop and get away with not doing those things and getting rid of that development cost.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mary Clemmons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Mary Clemmons. I live at Six Raymond Court, Portsmouth, Virginia, two-three-seven oh three. My middle name is Bradshaw. I'm a drive here with roots. Basically, I'm representing the Pecosin Historical Commission. I'm their secretary. We do have concerns. We just found about, out about this today. One of the issues that we find is that it is actually part of the Back Creek plantations, which it was either Mr. Pettis' land or Mr. Gilbert Simmons' land, which, these were seventeenth century plantations, early land patents. Local residents have brought to our attention that they have found items in their yards within this area, which include a jetton, which is a Dutch counting coin, kind of like you would use with an abacus, and Elizabethan coin, a Bellar bean, a fragment of a Bellar bean bottle, which is a German beer bottle, which is a seventeenth century artifact, as well as a dated bottle dated sixteen forty-four, borderware, which is extremely rare, and that's usually found in places like Jamestown or surrounding early sites like that, and scrawfido ware, which is also found at Jamestown. I am by profession an archaeologist. I do not work for a particular company. Right now, my specialty is material culture. So that's, I kind of know a lot about the stuff that people bring in. The other problem that we're seeing is the cemetery. You can have a cemetery with marked stones, yes, but what is the exact perimeters of that cemetery? Because a lot of times, the graves are either marked with field stones, or they are marked with wooden markers, and they disintegrate. So you really don't have an exact boundary until you've removed the soil. So it's nice that they're planning to preserve what's there, but I think the extent of what's there needs to be looked at. There are seventeen marked graves there. Jesse Fay Forrest in November of nineteen sixty-seven did the survey there. The graves are of the Callis family, the Freeman family, the Wilson family, the Hopkins, the Hunts, and the Warrenums. So like I said, there's probably a lot more graves that are not marked. I know from, you know, dealing with situations like this, especially at Taylor Farms, they actually had to reroute part of their development and redo roads and actually put green space in because the cemetery for the original Charles Parish Glebe was actually much larger than the existing stones. And when the soil was removed, they found that out. So that had to be redone. So what the historical, historical commission is suggesting is either a professional survey be, archaeological survey be done of this property.